We're gonna call to order the 259th session of the 10th Council, October 19th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Roll call, Mr. Doyle.
Carter.
Present.
Miller. Pedala. Stransky.
Present.
Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a corner.
Okay, no need to excuse any council members, we have a full roster. So before we get to approval of the agenda, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Pedala for appointing privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like for everybody to turn around and to wish Reverend Price a happy birthday tomorrow. He's made it through 73 years next year. Thank you, Bob. After all, he is a gentleman with a deep voice. Thank you.
All right, the clerk also has a special announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to inform the community, well, we know the election is coming up on November 2nd. We're still in need of some election workers. So please contact the clerk's office if you're interested in working the election. Phone number is 248-758-3006. You just have to be 16 years or older, a United States citizen, and able to serve the entire day of the election and attend at least one training class before the election. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda? Councilwoman Waterman?
Yes, Mr. President. As it relates to item number 19, I'd like to have that removed. And I'd like to explain why I would like to have that removed and make it table to a... Shut up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right. At the special meeting, the board adopted a 4.5% rate of return.
Pull your microphone out. Or your mask, I can't hear you, baby.
You can't hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, sorry about that, okay. At the special meeting of the board adopted a 4.5% rate of return for the use in determination of evaluation of the GERS fund. This action does not affect the rate of return, which is used for the ongoing annual evaluation. That rate will remain at 6%. Our actuary, a different, our actuary Louis, Louise recommended a different rate of return for the termination valuation because it serves a different purpose. The purpose of the annual valuation is to determine the required funding that is necessary for the system on an ongoing basis. The purpose of the termination valuation is to determine how much money will be transferred to the new GERS and how much is transferred to the new VIBA. It is one of the transactions, which is why it is important for us to get it right. Once transferred, the access can never come back into the GERS. At our October 4th meeting, it was a heated meeting, but we came to a resolve because CIPRA was at 5%, the GERS was at 3.5%. We compromised and we came to a 4.5%. So what I'm asking, until all the ducks have been laid out and that our actuary from the GERS board comes and give us the final numbers, which will be in the new GERS and which will go to the VIBA, I think this should be held off until we can get those actual numbers. So that's why I'm requesting that this be removed at this time.
Okay, is there support? Okay, I'll take the support from Taylor Burks. Any discussion?
Yeah. One, uh... It's water, councilperson Waterman. Is there anything within the actuary that says if it, can it ever drop below 6%?
That, that was something that, I guess, your executive office came with these, I don't know, her people that she brought in, talking about an enhancement and dropping. That is not what our board has dictated. So until our actuary comes in and tells us the actual numbers, this is what I'm asking this council to deliberate and hold off.
And the reason I bring it up is that, that I have been, since I've been on the council, which I talked to...
Went back to 2008 and looked at it, and I noticed the original one said 8%. And somewhere along the line, around 2015, 2016, it was dropped to 6. I just want, I'm gonna make sure that whatever the, the interest that's supposed to be accruing, it's supposed to be accruing because if you reduce it from 8 down to 6, then there's a loss. And just want to make sure that if it's still overfunded, that the taxpayers of Pontiac will not have to go back in and make up the difference. Thank you.
Okay, let me, let me clarify that for you two councilmen, and I'm not gonna go back and forth. But it was, we had it at a 7% rate and 8% probably was many moons ago, but it was at 7%. And what our board was waiting for when we had our meeting on the 4th is to see if CIPRA would agree with the 4.5% that was negotiated and compromised. And they did. I just see, I'm looking at my email where it comes from, and I see him sitting back there, Mr. Clark. It says, "Hi, Deborah. The CIPRA Board voted Friday to not object to the GERS Board decision to use 4.5% as a rate of return for the actuarial study for the termination." So with that, Mr. President, I will send information to my honorable body to let you, update you on everything that's going on, but I just wanted to give some clarity as to why I'm asking for this to be removed and held.
Thank you. Any other city council?
I would like to be recognized also.
Okay, seeing the roll call.
I'm not recognized, Mr. President.
Yes, we're just, so this is a discussion about removing this from the agenda.
Yeah, and I had a, I wanted to be recognized in terms of speaking to that.
Excuse me, Mayor Waterman. Councilwoman Waterman suggested that we would also have a subcommittee about that, and I'm looking forward to hearing that information at this time. This is just about moving this item off the agenda, not debating the merits of this item.
That's what I wanted to speak to.
Roll call, roll call.
Miller. Pedala.
Yeah.
Stransky. Taylor Burks. Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
Okay.
President.
Yes, Attorney Schub.
Just really quickly, since that item was removed, if in fact you had kept the item, I was just gonna bring up to council that I believe, and maybe Councilwoman Waterman can speak to this, that your ordinance, which allows for the regular payment, is going to have to be amended for both police and fire and GERS because it goes to December 31st. And I, it's my understanding that the payment will, it needs to be extended until, I think, February?
February 1st.
Yeah, so the ordinance, the ordinances will have to be amended. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's what I was trying to speak to. If you would like the mayor to comment on that.
I would not. Any other items on the agenda to be moved? I would ask that item number eight and nine be deferred, item number eight for two weeks, and then item number nine, and to the applicant request, to be brought back?
Mr. Chair, I would like to speak to number nine. Can I speak to number nine, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Mr. Nine, may I speak to that?
Been moved by Waterman, supported by Taylor Burks.
No, was it, oh, move by Taylor Burks.
Taylor Burks, supported by Waterman.
Mr. Chair, the administration withdraws that agenda item, just if I may be allowed to be recognized to let you know that.
So it's been a move and support. Any city council discussion?
Yes.
Mr. President, is it possible that you can separate eight and nine so they could be voted on independently and not together?
What I'm saying is this is for removal from the agenda.
Again, they can be separated. Okay, that's all, that's what I just asked. They were voted on eight and nine separately, then together. Because tie barred things can cause issues.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
So you have a move and support, so they would have to withdraw their move and support.
So you would have to withdraw your move and support. Okay, so... This is, my, my motion was to, before we got interrupted, was to defer item number eight for two weeks because they're still working with the property management on some stuff. And then item number nine, the actual applicant, which is in my district, asked for the item to be removed until they did everything else and carried back to us.
Oh, thank you for the clarification.
So that was, that was the reason behind removing the two items, but now I need to start all over. So is there a motion to remove item number eight for two weeks? All right, any city council discussion about item number eight? Seeing the roll call.
Stransky. Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
No.
Miller. Pedala. Four yays, three nays.
Okay, item removed. Now, is there a motion to remove item number nine indefinitely?
Move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? Seeing the roll call.
Taylor Burks. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Pedala. Stransky. Seven yays, no nays.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. It's been moved by Councilwoman Pedala, supported by Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burks.
No.
Oh, sorry, Waterman, I, I, it's the mask today. Any city council discussion? Seeing the roll call.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Pedala.
Yes.
Stransky. Taylor Burks. Seven yays, no nays.
Okay, agenda passes, which brings us to approval of minutes, October 12th, 2021.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing the roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Pedala.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
Okay, thank you, which brings us to public comments. Pro Tim Carter.
Thank you, sir. Let me double myself accordingly. The first is Mr. Dwayne Lyons.
He's not allowed to speak, he's on the agenda for item number two.
Okay.
We, we, we...
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
You are on the agenda for an interim director of public work, so therefore, yes, you are still at work because you want us to, the mayor wants this confirmation.
I requested the attorney speak to this item.
Go ahead, please, please speak, because, and then after, yeah, go ahead.
I believe Attorney Chubb did provide a memo on this to council.
So that, so, just...
Public comment and being able to address...
Thank you, and I, I want to speak to that really quickly. I spent this week dealing with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department about a complaint that was filed against this council for the Open Meetings Act, and they are closing that complaint because the city council was well within its rights to not let city employees speak during public comment time because their space is agenda time. And so not only was our tax dollars used inappropriately, the continuation of this practice is not only problematic, but it's a disservice to the citizens of Pontiac. And so I, I want to openly say, Attorney Chubb filed the complaint. I want to openly say to the mayor, I will be waiting and requesting your apology because the only thing that you can do in decency is apologize to this council for trying to run and dictate their meetings. And so this has been an ongoing process with you for eight years. We have less than 90 days left, and you continue to try to push these things every week. Mr. Lyons is on the agenda as item number two, he can come to the podium if he's got an announcement about life that he wants to make, that would be appropriate time to make it, but to stop the meeting and stop the process is going back and forth, trying to dictate to the citizens of Pontiac. We deserve so much better. We have real issues that are on the table, and to go back and forth with you about procedural basis of council meetings is absolutely asinine. And so to continue to harass me and my colleagues is unacceptable. We are separate but equal branches of government. You have not recognized that since the beginning of our terms, and so one of the things that I would ask is for a formal apology that you can write and put up, post on the city's website to this council for the actions and the waste of tax dollars, and I want an invoice of how much you paid Attorney Chubb to write this, this grunna letter and file with our sheriff's department, a formal complaint against me. And I just spoke to Mr. Clark, who said he didn't know anything about this complaint. And so when you're doing things outside of Jamarko Mullins and Horton, that is absolutely incredulous. So thank you, and we will move on.
Mr. Chair, I will speak to that, since you have addressed me directly. I follow the edicts of our city attorney, Mr. Bosnick, Mr. Clark is here, he should speak to this.
Ms. Coretta, please take the, Ms. Rem, please take the microphone.
Who did, who did, who did file that complaint.
Thank you, and thank you for being here.
It was a city attorney, I expect the city attorneys to speak to that.
You have three meetings to speak, Ms. Rem.
It is your responsibility, and I renounced anything that the chair did say that was absolutely erroneous, suspicious, and terrible.
I am Coretta Ren.
It is not erroneous, and we should get to the letter.
And I am here as a citizen of Pontiac to acknowledge the progress of a citizen doing something great for Pont, in Pontiac. I am a citizen, I've been a citizen for about 30 years here. And about a year and a half ago, I came before council to let you know about a play that I was in the process of writing and presenting. But because of COVID, we were unable to do the play. But I did not stop the process. So as of today, we are getting ready to do our first red carpet premiere of the movie. It will become a movie, it's a movie now, and we will be presenting it on December 4th. And I would be honored if council could be present on that day. It is located in Detroit at the Bel Air Luxury Cinema. And I know it's not in Pontiac, but the thing about it is, we represent Michigan, not only Pontiac, but we represent Michigan. And as a family of the state, I feel we should be able to go anywhere and be great representation. And so if you see the flyer, there's information as far as how you are able to obtain the tickets. It is called Healing Walls. In this particular movie, I wrote, and I am the executive producer of the movie. And it's about a grandfather and a granddaughter, a granddaughter growing up with her grandparents, but learning how to be the young lady that she need to be. It also influenced, my greatest purpose of this movie was to show the importance of the value of the male voice in the family. And that's what I wanted to present through this. I hope not only council, but any citizen here or out there that is watching, that you will be a part of this celebration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next would be Mr. Quincy Stewart. And on deck would be Chuck Johnson.
Welcome to the Def Comedy Jam. Tonight, some sobering facts about the disparities in 2021 for so-called black people. The question of integration in this country was a farce without including a radical redistribution of economic power. To merely sit next to someone in a classroom or at a lunch counter or ride a bus or even be president or mayor does not translate into power. Integration did not produce racial or economic equality for blacks. Why? Because it was just a mere sentiment. This whole dream of Dr. King, having a colorblind society took the focus from economic and cultural uplift to an illusion of integration. Blacks are still an underclass in America. According to the Urban Institute, Washington DC in 2016, the net worth, the net worth of white households was 81 times higher than black households. White's net worth then was $284,000 compared to $3,500 for blacks. And more startling is when the study was conducted in Prince George's County, which it was the highest concentration of wealthy and educated blacks in the country. Hispanics and Asians, both groups having less than large numbers until 45 years ago, and even less time for so-called Arabs are now have, have doubled and tripled the net worth of blacks who have been here nearly for 400 years. You can't say it's because blacks are lazy, less motivated, or trifling because white folks didn't build what, been built all that wealth with lazy slaves. As a matter of fact, it was the lazy whites who enslaved blacks to build their wealth. Underclass means that regardless of individual exceptions like Oprah or athletes or entertainers and all such that exists, the group remains fixed at the lowest levels, century after century, regardless of boom or bust times in the general economy. Neither civil rights, social integration, believing in Jesus or Mohammed, has or will effectively helped black folk to escape the underclass status. After 50 years of marching, singing, protesting, and begging, we are still fixed at the bottom beneath an unrelenting flow of immigrants and foreign economic exploitation. Our struggle has been co-opted by white women, the LGBT community, other ethnic groups under the banner of civil rights, and our struggle has been displaced and the specific needs of our people have plummeted into murky waters. That's why the term diversity was introduced, to divert resources, attention, opportunities, and population power, a power away from black folk. So it should be crystal clear that despite individual illusions, that it's either self-determination or bust, it's root, hog, or die.
Thank you, sir. Chuck Johnson, on deck would be Mr. Kenny Anderson.
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you that are watching via television. Kind of gobbled that up. I made a comment last week regarding a complaint that I made against a property, and it was addressed to a certain degree, so I'm not going to elaborate on that any. But I do want to turn to item number 13 on the agenda. I'm not going to belabor that either tonight, but the council will have to do what they feel is in the best interest of the taxpayers of the city of Pontiac. What I do want to do for a moment, I'd like to say to the council, if at any point in time you decide to address our issue with the Pontiac Planning Commission, which I think is a good group of individuals, but we don't have enough folk on that commission. We need a city council person on that commission, and we need a citizen, whoever it may be, in the city on that commission, so that that commission will have enough voice and enough opinion that they can make proper decisions. Unlike this last meeting, they had four people, two yay and two nay, and they couldn't go on with the process. The process died when it shouldn't have. The process should have moved forward, and this is what makes a city move forward in our efforts to bring what we need to economize our city, to make it grow. So with that said, please look at those issues, a citizen, a person from the council, and the rest of the commissioners that are, as far as I'm concerned, is doing a pretty good job. But we need to, we need to pack that commission so that it's functional. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you very much. Is it Jose Yabra? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone, God bless you. I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, regarding the retiree health insurance. I just want to remind you that many retirees such as myself have battled through COVID without any insurance. Many of you know firsthand what COVID has done to our families and loved ones, yet the executive branch has still took its time from the time that everything was put in motion, when the case was won, on to today. I was on the Zoom meeting the other day, and I was completely disheartened at the amount of time that I felt was wasted in the Zoom meeting. All the information that was given could have easily been given in a letter. And I say it was a tremendous waste of time because what I heard was so disheartening, and what I heard was that really it was just a bunch of finger pointing of who did what, who didn't do what, and who didn't get what done. The next thing I want to focus on is some of these numbers in here. Some of these things in here as far as cable commission and all that, I really want to, want to see exactly why a lot of this stuff was not budgeted into the budget, the fiscal year budget. I'm, I'm sure we did not get blindsided this was all of a sudden happening, and this is a tremendous waste of time for the city council to be seeing something like this when it should have been budgeted along with the budget. And this is one of the things that I see with the city as far as the executive branch goes, is that, that there's no foresight. And I'm asking you to be prayerful for this city because I want you guys to understand something, Pontiac is the seat of Oakland County. And as I did a, a search of the seat in my Bible, what I found out was the seat is actually the throne. And I, and I want you to understand that Pontiac is the throne of Oakland County, so as Pontiac goes, so does Oakland County. And it doesn't matter where you live at in Oakland County, you should be praying for the city of Pontiac to succeed so that Oakland County can succeed. God bless you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Robert, is this Price? So Dr. Robert?
Thank you.
Is that Mr. Price? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, God, for each of us being here today. I first of all want to thank Kermit Williams for making sure I had water to drink to take my medication. I want to thank my district person, Ms. Waterman, for the kind words that you had to say about the Hubert Price gathering at Bede Park. You were very kind, and I want to thank the mayor for being there and saying some kind words about my brother. I really appreciate all the things that went on that day. I was glad to be able to participate and give a prayer. Hubert, as his wife said, was not a politician. He was a public servant. He perhaps was one of the greatest public servants that this community would ever have. He left with me a whole lot of work, and I don't have to go to the graveyard when I think about Hubert. I can go by Bede Park. Another thing is, I got in the mail the other day, some misunderstanding about one of the candidates, Jim Grimaldi.
Nope, Mr. Price, you can't talk about that.
I can't speak about that?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I'm not gonna speak about it, but I'm gonna say this much. I've been in the process of politics and elections for a long time, and I pray that we get a mayor that can help this all-American city be what it's supposed to be. This young man spoke about Pontiac being the seat of Oakland County. We've been the seat of Oakland County, and so as this city goes, Oakland County goes. Oakland County... Oakland County right now is working with a billion-dollar budget for the next three years. Every year it's a billion dollars. They shouldn't be coming to us for nothing because they have a billion dollars to work with. We should be getting some of that billion dollars to help the city of Pontiac be what it's supposed to be, seeing that it is the seat of Oakland County. Everything that happens in this county comes through Pontiac one way or another. And I want us to know that my time is up, but God has blessed us all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Billy Swizer, and then, um, the next group is going to be a little complicated. I believe it's Mark Bowman and Perry Earl. Marcus? Okay. Just, just need to make sure that we're hyphenated, different, different group. Thank you, Billy.
Hello, I'm Billy Swizer. I am a trustee on the General Employees Retirement System GERS and also I am a director with the CEPR, the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association. As Patrice Waterman said, we need to wait till we get it finished with the GERS separating the money so that we fund the GERS and we fund the VIVA. Then we'll see how much money we have left and then we can go within enhanced benefits. I was very disappointed last Wednesday when I listened to conversations with the mayor. And I would know that a whole lot of retirees were confused. There was the mention of a stipend. There's no stipend. If you opted out of the insurance, you get twenty thousand dollars. You're going to get a ten ninety-nine and you're going to have to pay taxes on it. You won't be getting no insurance after that. The other thing is you have to analyze after you deduct the money, how much money's left? How much money's left for GERS and how much is for the VIVA? I've asked the VIVA board to do a actuary study, but they won't. They'll wait until after the open enrollment and see how many people they have to enroll. Yeah, I went to the VIVA board before. They had, and they got the estimates of what the cost was. The estimates included dead people. It also included people that didn't have ten years seniority. You need ten years seniority in order to get insurance. But if they don't want to do what they need to do, it'll come down later on and somebody's going to have to pay. If the money's gone for, once the money's gone for GERS, it doesn't come back. So I hope that it, it, it ends up okay for GERS and it ends up okay for the retirees. Now, the way I understood it at last week's meeting was the mayor wanted us, us retirees to harass the council and to get this actuary study done. That's not the way it goes. So I think that Patrice's idea is very good. Do the first thing, get the VIVA up, separate the GERS, have actuary studies, and then move on. And just because I am a person that is on the, I'm the trustee for the CEPR, I'll be sending all of you that don't, that I have not paid your dues up, I'll be sending you a letter and asking for the money because we need to make sure we have, uh, war tests ready to do what we got to do. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Very informative. Thank you. Okay. Does everybody, the name is on one line. Uh, I have, this is Marcus and Perry Earl. Okay. Just want everyone to know that your name is on the same line. Trying to discriminate.
I'm Perry Earl Junior, Marcus Bowman. Just up a little higher. So I come to you as a citizen. I come to you as a public servant that doesn't have a title and is not getting paid around here. Um, and first I want to give honor where honor is due. I want to give a shout out to the mayor's office, Mark Holland, President Kermit Williams, uh, Councilwoman Schramsky for coming out to help us with a project that we were just responding to a, um, residence complaint that has been going on for a very, very, very long time. Now, the fact of the matter is, we went out, we did the work, but as we were doing the work, we realized that nobody should be living under these circumstances of these conditions. We unraveled a lot of things that shouldn't have been happening and owners neglecting a lot of services that if it would have been one of the residents in this community, we would have been getting hit over the head by code enforcement and every other city entity. So coming to you as a customer service advocate for the people, I say, as a city, as a government, this can't happen. We can't allow this. First time I ever got up on this podium because I talked about the grass being to our city council. And I mean it. Perception is reality. Our city needs to have a different view. Our community needs to have a different look if we want to attract the type of attention that we're looking for versus pulling all of the negative energy that we have been putting. So let's get past all of the political bureaucracy. Let's get past all of the political back and forth. And let's do something to help these people in this community. Let's do something to help these people over at Manor Court, which are living in deplorable situations that they shouldn't be living in and they're paying section A and they have a section A voucher. So as a public servant advocate for the community, I'm putting a, uh, announcement out to everybody that this has to change and it's going to change because you got young men like myself, young men like Perry Earl and other young men in this community, as well as other young women in this community that's not going to allow this to happen. And I thank you. You have a great day.
Thank you.
I don't know how much more time we got, but, uh,
Forty seconds.
Huh?
Yeah, forty seconds.
Okay. I just want to say that, um, I don't want to make this about a district thing. I wanted to make it about a one Pontiac thing. So I appreciate Megan Schramsky coming out displaying that and Mark Holland coming out there displaying that because I don't care who you are. If you for Pontiac and trying to move Pontiac forward and you got the right attentions, I'm working with you. I don't care what anybody else has got to say about that. So, um, I'm for one Pontiac, not just one district because we don't organize and come together, we won't have a city. So it's up to us and the future is right here, the young people. So it's up to you.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Kathy?
Evening.
Good evening.
I'm coming tonight as a private citizen of Pontiac. I've lived within the city limits now for about three and a half years, three years. I've been getting tax notices from the city telling me that I owe taxes from 2017. I didn't live here. I didn't work here. I've been fighting this now for three years. I'm sick of it. Get yourself together, tax department. I don't owe you a dime. The other thing is, I had an opportunity to be at city hall this week upstairs in the conference room. Let's get it together. All those old nasty seats are gone. Yes, the floor needs work. Yes, there's all kinds of things that need to happen, but why can't they happen while we're here? So that come, when the new administration starts, we can go back home and have things already done. We've still got time. Again, let's get it together.
Thank you, Pastor. Um, Mr. President, end of public comments. Okay. Uh, six thirty-nine. Okay. Thank you. Your name is, sir? Oh, I'm sorry. You, you was the second one I called. Lloyd Garrett. Please, go ahead. You was number two.
Okay, my, my little issue here is the same thing I've been saying a long while back with this property this gentleman owns by the lake on Kennet. And it's fourteen eighteen four two eight eight zero ten. The guy says he owns the property. He's still shooting deer. He's still running people off. He's, and nobody does anything about it. I'm standing right there on the far side of the woods. He comes out. He put up a new white fence and he said, okay, I own here, but I, he mows the grass. Nobody pulled permits to cut none of the trees down. I talked to the people at the forest department. She got moved or, or fired or whatever. Two months later, the building comes down. Then after the building comes down, I talked to the, I talked to everybody else over here in the city hall. I talked to the other people. They went out and did their inspections. Yeah, there's still no trespassing signs. Yeah, he's still blocking up the area saying he owns the property, running people off, running kids off. Does anybody say or do anything about it? Still the same thing. I've been saying this for years. One of these days, this knucklehead or one of these knuckleheads at the top of the hill is going to accidentally, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to rent me one of those little deers that move around a bit and I'm going to let him shoot it and collect the bullet top the damn thing. Even put up a dock out, out by the lake. Dude, I mean, I don't know how much more I can say or do. I don't know what else I can tell you. I've, I've straightened out the archives. I've straightened people out that didn't know what was going on down, down in archives over at the other place or the other place around the corner. I've, I've got all the paperwork. I did all the homework. I even helped them straight everything out. They never even heard of it when I asked them. So I straightened them out, got it all taken care of, got everything done. So somebody has to die before anybody does anything? I'm not sitting here making up lies and bullshit. I'm flat out telling you like it is. The guy's still doing the same stupid shit.
Excuse me, sir. The language, language.
I, I get a little carried away. I apologize. I get a little bent, but I've been at the same thing for years and, and I know I got all the property deeds, everything that everybody owns around the whole lake. The guy even owns the middle, the guy, one individual, owns some of the property in the middle of the lake. So I don't know what more to do besides get me, rent me one of those little deers that move around a bit and let him shoot the stupid thing and collect the bullet.
That's your time. Thank you, sir. That's your time. Thank you. All right, Mr. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We're going, we're going, we're going to move on to, um, a matter of fact, I'm going to ask for a point of privilege to move the special presentation for Kids First above, uh, items number two, three, four, and five. All right. Uh, this gives me great pleasure. Uh, Mr. Bell, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Pontiac. I want to thank you for hosting us tonight. My name is Richard Bell and I'm here on behalf of the Kids First Initiative, STEAM Ignite, and all of our young people in the city of Pontiac. Students are often drawn to subjects they perceive to be exciting. Here, uh, we don't have a microphone. Thank you for your assistance today. Can't do anything without a team. Safety first. So what we're going to see here today is our open two faces. The double reaction, the watch reaction, your face, and then imagine our young people. Right here, all right, uh, councilwoman, if you don't mind, please, uh, keep this rake in your body just like this, even though we have gloves on. Take the top off and pour it right in here. This is hydrogen peroxide, but it's industrial strength and not the three percent that you would get in your home. So you can pour that in, ma'am. That'll be wonderful. Okay? I'm going to take that from you and you can put the cap back on. Wonderful. Way to stay safe. Thank you so much. Nothing spilled. All right. Definitely is breast cancer awareness month. We're going to put a little bit of pink in there to bring some awareness, breast cancer awareness. Also, the type of activities and careers that are probably going to find a little bit more, find a cure for cancer one day. Probably going to be our young people using the STEM and STEAM type of activity. Okay, a little bit more, ma'am. All right. Wonderful, wonderful. Right there. All right. Can I ask you, regular dish, nothing special about this. It's Pontiac, so it's going to do something special though. All right. Here we go. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. All right. That's enough right there, ma'am. If I can get somebody to, uh, I'll take this. I would ask the councilwoman to step back a little bit because I don't know what the insurance is like. I don't know our insurance is like. Working over here, we'll go right here. If I can get somebody to take the microphone away from me. Definitely don't want you to get in on the microphone. And it's you. Hello, my groupmate. Hey, you're not going to win. We have a comprehensive program from cradle to career that attracts kids to science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. No elementary kid is going to see this and not get excited and is still reacting over there. That's called the hook. That's how we hook them in about that excitement. I want you to imagine with me for a moment. If you can, if you will, a city. Not just any city, but a smart city. Not just any smart city, but Pontiac is a smart city. In that smart city, we bring this up. In that smart city for us. In that smart city, I want you, uh, a city where the roads will automatically charge your electric car. I know some of you don't want an electric car, but it's, it's coming. Anywhere in the city, you can have access to free high-speed internet powered by six G. That's right. I said six G, not five G. They're already working on six G technology. Smart utilities, solar powered lights that dim when no one is around, but shine bright when there's motion. Who's going to build this smart city? Some of our young engineers from our program, the same ones who are learning how to use the engineer design process to solve some of the problems in the community. This is a virtual reality headset. And what it does, definitely is game, but what it will do, what it can do, you can build a model for all you engineers in virtual space. If you're building a physical model, it's going to be very expensive. You have to make some changes. But in virtual space, you can build the models. You can move them around however you see fit. You can make adjustments. You can redesign. And it won't cost any money because it's in a digital space. When you get done with that model, you can save it and you can put it in a 3D printer and you can print it out. They're printing out three, three houses now. They're printing out 3D cars. Our young people could print out our new smart city using technology just like this. Now, we're just one small organization. Imagine what we could do if we got the full weight of the city government, county government, the state government, federal government behind us. And they're ready. They're waiting on us. Now we're ready now also. So I'll put this to the side. What do the, uh, in the smart city, what kind of jobs would there be in a smart city? Probably drone pilots. We'll go right here. All right. I'm going to sit down right here. Semi-autonomous, semi-autonomous. It will fly itself. Okay. In our program, young people are, students in the third grade learn how to safely operate and fly drones in our program. Workforce development. I'm sure Amazon would love to hire them. This drone right here specifically is more on the toy end. We do have some drones. This will go probably about, uh, four hundred yards. We have some drones that the students have flown. And some of the council members have flown. They go one point five miles. Legally by law, you're not, you can't fly a drone farther than you can see. You're not supposed to fly it over people. I'm not flying it over anyone now. This drone has a four G camera so we can take some pictures with it. Our young people learn how to multitask. I can be the pilot and be the photographer at the same time. All you guys can wave. I didn't get the waiver, but I want to take a picture of you guys. So don't worry. I didn't get a waiver, so we can go up. We'll come here. We'll come back here. We have an emergency in the city of Pontiac. Let's say, for example, some type of emergency, somebody giving away a hundred million dollars on the east side over there. We need to know how to direct the people over there by using this drone and technology like this. Also, our young people are going to learn how to use the artificial technology that's in some of these drones. So if the drone gets lost, it's going to identify where it is in three-dimensional space, use the satellites, it's going to fly back home automatically. So if the drone gets lost, it's gonna identify where it is in three-dimensional space, use the satellites, it's gonna fly back home automatically. And we've done that over the summertime with this program with students as young or in the third grade. I'll go ahead and bring this drone down safely so we can move on to the next component. Third grade, our primary drone, their practical drone. They want to plan to learn to our state. That's right, y'all, if you don't have any accidents, law nonsense. All right. In our programs, students are going to meet, engage, and work with professionals in the STEM fields that look like them. You can't be what you can't see. What do we, what do we do with our young people? We engage them with STEM. How do we solve the crime problem in Pontiac? When is the last time you seen two engineers, two technologists, out in the street, two doctors, two lawyers, two STEM fields, any field, professional people fighting it out in the streets, shooting it out in the streets? It's rare that that happens. What about jobs? With a highly skilled and trained workforce, we can bring the companies to us. We've already done it before with General Motors. We demonstrated that we can hold big technology. They're waiting on us to pay catch-up and our young people starts with our young people. Workforce development. What about, uh, we are here tonight because we don't want the city council president, Williams, city councilwoman, Waterman, Dr. Burks respectively, who continue to try to help fund this program out of their pockets when there's city dollars, there are county dollars, which is, I'm meeting with the county commissioner again, they're on board, there's state dollars, there are federal dollars. Just met with the, uh, Department of Energy, they, how can we get the program? It's national security they were talking about. So why, that's over my pay grade. Let me get somebody who can help out here with the program. So again, we hit the Kids First Initiative. STEAM Ignite are ready to engage, empower, and employ our young people using the power of STEAM. And I'll get Mr. Killian to help me out with this, if that's okay? Let me leave you with a parting gift.
Right.
It's just science, people. It's just science. It's just science.
All right, thank you colleagues for, uh, giving me that point of privilege. Let's give it up again for Mr. Bell and Kids First Initiative. Uh, now that brings us, uh, to item number two, uh, discussions. Uh, interim, uh, Department of Public Works Director, uh, Dwayne A. Lyons, uh, confirmation. Uh, Madam Mayor and Mr. Lyons, if you want to take the voting.
It was a, uh, discussion that was, uh, a council agenda item. Administration didn't put this on, but if you want confirmation that I have with my authority as the mayor, uh, to, uh, as we say, the branch of government that administers, uh, does appoint a department head. We've had a vacancy in the, uh, DPW department head for some months now, as well as some agenda items that we just had short staffing to cover. I'm very happy, uh, that Mr. Lyons has stepped up to assume this position. Uh, I have assigned some very specific tasks that have not been able to be handled by the, uh, deputy director and by the, um, city engineer. Uh, they were both offered the position to step up to that administrative head when we lost, uh, the previous DPW director. Both of them declined to do that. Uh, and so although I attempted to find, uh, two different, uh, people to fill that position, we did not. So I'm very happy that Mr. Lyons is very capable of fulfilling that and some of the tasks that he has been, uh, particularly assigned to do, he's handling very well, including, um, the, um, I won't go into specific tasks, but I'm happy he's doing that, uh, as well as he's still carrying through some of his other duties. Major of the seniors which they enjoy, including, uh, our Friday night parties have started back again. I just wanna remind people that, uh, for the seniors, we have a twenty, on the twenty-ninth, they're having a luau, uh, at the Bowen Center. So thank you, Mr. Lyons, for accepting that. Uh, the whole aftermath of COVID has brought some very particular problems to the city and I'm happy that you have stepped into that role.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for questions from my colleagues.
Welcome, President. This is discussion. This is a discussion, okay? Uh, the last time we did receive, um, a resume, a ton of resume. I don't know if a contract has been issued. I know Mr. Lyons has, um, been in the mayor's executive office, but you're stepping him up to a department head and we've received no resume, so that's my comment.
I don't, I haven't sent any resumes for, um, the others until, uh, the ones who needed ratification. Most employees who we hired don't.
You did put one out there for interim deputy, uh, Deputy Holland. We did receive his resume.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, all right. So, okay.
When he needed to be ratified.
So, Council President?
Uh, yes, Attorney Sharp and then Councilwoman Peetler.
So I guess the question is, this is the discussion. So the question is whether or not you are then, um, asking for this to be brought for confirmation? And if you are asking it to be brought for the council to vote on, then you wouldn't need those documents because you have had them for every candidate that was brought before you for confirmation.
Of course. And the fact I did not bring it for confirmation, that's why I don't have, that we don't have those documents in front of you.
So, so, uh, Madam Mayor, before I call on the rest of my colleagues, we have thirty days in which to confirm people one way or another. Uh, you announced on, uh, the public service announcement you did about medical marijuana updates, uh, Mr. Lyons in that position. So just wanted to give him, uh, the opportunity that's afforded to anybody else that is going to, uh, assume a department head in the city of Pontiac. Uh, Councilwoman Peetler.
Yes. I get to a little bit more than just the resume, Madam Mayor. Um, your last DPW director that you appointed, you did fire him two days later, but the last one we actually interviewed because he was one of those that was filling the, you brought in to see about filling the position of a deputy mayor. This is a gentleman from Wisconsin or from Milwaukee.
That's correct.
So we would like to see a resume from Mr. Lyons if he's gonna fill out this position. We have had one for everybody else and I think it would be only proper. So before you say that we haven't, yes, we have, let's be interviewed, the former deputy director. Thank you.
Hey, they can't see you.
Mr. President? Uh-uh. Let's go to the next thing. Cause I'm not dealing with this matter.
Okay, any of my other colleagues have a question?
Uh, I, I just got one. I just got one question. And it's, it's, it's not directed at you.
Speaking to the microphone.
I, I'm thinking I am, Mr. President. You know, it's just disturbing that you don't know who working for what in your department, in your elected official. I did, I had some light issues. I didn't know who to call because I didn't know that we had a deputy director. And it's just, some things just gotta be done decent and order. That's all. Decent and order. Pontiac is becoming a joke with elected officials in this city. It's just, it's just sad and we just, I mean, look at other municipalities. We do things so different. This has been four interesting years. Four interesting, I've never seen things done this way. I never see, I've seen many councils, many colleagues up here before I got here. I never see anything like this. It's government of do your own thing. And you can't, you can't run government like this. This is just not right. And, 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 Mr. President, what concerns me is that what is the reason? I mean, we don't know anything. An elected official monitoring my constitution and walking up to me, I don't know anything, which make me look stupid. Makes, make me look a little, he's just doing things decent, proper, and in order. That's all we ask. We, no, we can't side for you, Mayor, but just, just pure, just, just pure respect for one of them. That's all. That's all we ask. That's all you, you know, I didn't wanna find out about Mr. Lyons through TV or something like that. Just, you know, if you're not gonna confirm it, you're not. With Pontiac, I want you to hear something. Please make your next mayor accountable. Please. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Waterman, uh, and Councilwoman Miller. I was looking at Councilwoman Waterman. Next thing on the agenda, uh, medical marijuana caregiver ordinance discussion. Um, I don't know who put this on the agenda. Need my mic?
Got it. Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. President. And the reason why I asked for this to be a discussion, um, back, I believe it was in July, you asked, um, for the city attorney to prepare caregiver ordinance. Um, I thought we were moving in that direction. I attended the planning commission meeting at the beginning of this month, I believe it was October sixth. There was supposed to be a, um, presentation about the caregiver ordinance and it was removed from the agenda. So I wanted to bring this issue back to your, um, attention and the reason why is because in the clerk's office, we're receiving a number of complaints from citizens about what are proceeded to be, I guess alleged to be illegal operations of growing, um, medical marijuana. I've been asked if I'm, you know, giving out any licenses and I'm trying to explain the difference between the caregiver process and the commercial grower, um, process, which is on the slide, um, up there. Um, a caregiver can grow up to twelve plants. The key difference with the caregiver, they are not subject to regu- regulations that commercial growers have to. Their plants are not tested. Through the clerk's office, we can license, um, there are three classifications of growers. A class A, up to five hundred plants, um, B, a thousand, C, fifteen hundred, um, plants. In addition to that, the products, the commercial growers do not sell directly to patients and their products must be tested. And then through some research, what I also realized is, is that we're allowing caregivers to go into commercial spaces, which is legal. Um, but if we could advance it to the slide which says, there are two caregiver, alleged caregivers, I would say, that actually apply for a provisioning center license in the non-overlay. So it seems to me that some people are, are operating as a caregiver when really they want a commercial, um, operation. And provisioning centers aren't allowed to actually grow, they just sell. So it's the difference between a commercial grower and a provisioning center. So I say all this because it's important for us to move this whole process of establishing a caregiver ordinance because caregivers do not have to, um, pledge community benefits to the city like commercial growers. Caregivers, marijuana plants are not tested. And then in another thing, they're also basically unfair competition for commercial growers. Caregivers are really supposed to be like, in a sense, personal caregivers. Family members, friends, to the essence, not acting in the capacity of commercial growers. Um, I would also like to alert everybody that we will be, um, investigating anybody that's operating without, um, a permit. You can contact the clerk's office at two four eight, two four eight seven five eight three zero zero five, or email us at marijuana in a spell with a, a H because that's the way it is in the ordinance. Marijuana at pontiac dot M I dot, um, U S. Cause the planning division has come up with some guidelines, but guidelines do not replace an ordinance. The guidelines are not enough for caregivers. We need an ordinance. So we just simply need to move this process, um, forward. So if we could get like maybe some clarification from planning, I asked for a copy of, in essence, the ordinance and I was told that I could not get a copy of the ordinance because it, it wasn't in final form. Um, but again, we need to, to move this process forward. So I really wanted to bring this to the council's, um, attention.
Broke that, Carter?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, and, and thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I actually, actually went to Michigan, went to Laura, cause there is some conflicting information about the caregivers. It's allegedly the caregivers are not able, they can operate in residential, they can, there's allegedly, they cannot operate it out of commercial building. If they operate out of commercial building, they are limited to only sixty and not seventy-two because the owner of the building is no longer, is no longer allowed to grow their own twelve plants. So we went from seventy-two down, down to seventy. I have been dealing with Laura and also Representative Ed Robbie out of, uh, out of Ann Arbor to go ahead to clarify what a caregiver is and, and a caregiver in their space. The city does have the right to have zoning and the city can stop certain growing. Uh, normally a caregiver would, would operate in a residential area and not in commercial. They are not a business. They are supposed to be a green thumb grower for their, for their friends that need, that unable to grow plants. But they are not in the business where they should be selling their products. And we understand that, Mr. Clerk, that there might be some individuals in Pontiac who might be doing over five hundred plants. It is being investigated as we speak and as, I will, I will give you the outcome of what that is. Thank you, everybody.
Anybody else from council?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Peetler and then Councilwoman Miller.
What I understand is, and this is coming from the net team, they can only grow twelve plants. They have to have a fenced-in yard. It has to be on a residential property. It's fenced in and it's kept secluded away from the public. So the public can't, can't get at it because it's supposed to be secured and it's just twelve plants per card. So if the caregiver has five cards, then he can grow sixty plants, but he has to have those five cards and documented. They could be for family members, but they still have to be documented. And there was a kickback so long ago. We have a gentleman here that's complaining about Lakeside being the private road and it is, but they also raided Lakeside because there was a house on that private road, Lakeside, because there are two Lakesides in District Three. And they raided him because he was growing plants in his backyard and it was not secure. So with that, um, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Clerk, about not being commercial. It's gotta be in. So with that, um, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Clerk, about not being commercial, it's got to be, it can't be in commercials, it's got to be residential. Thank you.
Councilwoman first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Clerk, Garland, I think it's the best thing to do in Pontiac, because I think as a councilperson and probably my colleagues, my colleagues, I got a lot of them, I don't know how you're going to go about shutting it down, uh, because once it was so bad, the fire truck came, we didn't know what was going on. I mean, so it, it's, it's bad. It's dangerous work, and, um, I support this ordinance, I think it's well overdue.
Anybody else? Ask the question.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Can you speak into the mic? I don't know if this juice is up or not. No, the, no, can we get him another microphone, please?
No, he can have mine.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just, I wanted to address a question as to the status of the ordinance. I did have, um, some discussions with Attorney Chubb on this agenda item. Uh, before the meeting, he indicated to me that there are some, uh, house bills that are currently moving that would change the number of plants. Uh, and it was, those house bills, if they're passed, would significantly, um, affect the ability and the need to regulate. So I think there's a little bit of a issue in terms of waiting to see what happens with that legislation. But my understanding is that it is in the process of being crafted. And Mr. Chubb is working, uh, on that along with a couple of the other administrators. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, uh, have questions about this? Okay, we're going to move on to item number four. Uh, I asked that this item be put on the agenda. Uh, today, we have a number of expiring contracts, uh, which will be done before February. And so I wanted to make sure we were on the ball and on board, uh, for that. Uh, one of the contracts that's up that I know about is, uh, the sheriff's contract. Also, I believe the firing EMS service contract is also up. Um, and I believe that Wade Trim has several contracts, and so I don't know who from administration can speak to this or kind of answer some of these questions, Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we are well aware, as administration always is, and keep on target with the schedule of contracts, uh, that are due to be either renewed or, um, evaluated for performance and quality. Uh, and you are correct, there are four that we are working on right now. Um, we have, uh, advised the various parties of the negotiations that we will be carrying on. Uh, and, uh, I have Mr. Carrington here, whose, uh, department often, um, arranges such meetings and brings the appropriate parties together to give you the list of the ones that we are working on currently, uh, and we will advise you of the status of those as we move forward. Mr. Carrington.
Yes, um, good evening, uh, council president, uh, members of the council. As the mayor alluded to, we are, um, evaluating and discussing contracts that are expiring. Uh, we are tracking those. Um, we have reached out to several of those, um, entities, namely the sheriff, Oakland County Sheriff, uh, whose contract is set to, set to expire at December 31st, end of this calendar year, uh, along with Wade Trim. Uh, we also have a, uh, agreement with Clean Net that is set to expire and with, um, Wade Trim. Uh, additionally, we have, uh, a contract, um, so with each of these entities, we have reached out to them, and we are in the process of setting up some discussions to, uh, both evaluate the performance of the contract as well as discuss, uh, potential extension of, uh, or new agreements or extension of the existing agreements. Uh, additionally, we have also, um, began taking a look at the, uh, city's contract with Plant Moran. So as the mayor alluded to, we are, um, aware of these, we, we track and monitor, uh, contracts that are expiring, and we have, uh, begun communications with the respective entities.
Yes, Attorney Sheriff.
If I can, to council, I think, uh, council should, um, kind of decide whether or not you want to actually, uh, have negotiations in terms of changing terms, or is it the position of this council to actually attempt to do a month-to-month until the new council and administration comes in? Because I do know with the Wade Trim contract, if you guys remember from last December, there's, um, information in there or provisions in there that allow for month-to-month. Uh, you just need to know what that cost would be. And in terms of the sheriff's contract, again, I think, uh, this council wanted to have some really extensive discussions in terms of a renewal of a contract. So again, is it the position of this council to go month-to-month, or do you want to, at this time, negotiate a, another contract that potentially could go beyond a year and so forth? So I think this council needs to decide if you guys want to do a month-to-month on these contracts, which I would suggest. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask Attorney Sheriff a question, because I was going to bring it up.
Speaking to the mic.
Uh, new administration coming in to do these contracts really is, it will be inappropriate, and I was going to ask about, what about the sheriff's department?
Well, see, that, that's the whole thing, this council would have to have some kind of, to see what the position is, whether they want to entertain that, and now is the time to do it because of the fact you only have a couple more months left. And if so, I would imagine, this is just me saying that, that any contract typically, when you're going month-to-month, is going to be more than if it had a term.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, if you go month-to-month, once the new administration comes in, that's another two or three months, they shouldn't be that bad.
That's up to this council.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Madam Mayor, and then Councilwoman Piedler.
Yes, uh, in terms of whether council wants to go month-to-month, that's up to you, council. But that would be unusual and certainly not customary. Uh, since these contracts are done, the, these contracts have had those termination dates, um, December 31st. And when I came in, the council before us negotiated the ones that were due, uh, December 31st, just as we have continued to do and just as administrations before. So it's not inappropriate. It's actually, in fact, the, uh, technical and the proper way to go about it. But it's up to this council, if you want the, the inconsistency of having month-to-month contracts for some very important contracts, then that's certainly up to you. But I think that it's premature to decide that now until we've actually brought you, uh, some of the parameters, uh, and the negotiations that we have done, so you have something to consider.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, then Councilwoman Piedler, and then Councilwoman Miller.
Isn't there in the clause with sheriff's department, isn't there where we give them a three-month notice before we terminate the contract with them? Madam Mayor?
I know there is a clause, right now I can't, uh, state for you offhand what that timeframe is. But it is something that they have to report back to, uh, the county commission in good enough time. This isn't something that is done just on the spur of the moment. So I hope council will consider that and the kinds of contracts we're considering, uh, that work in the best interest and the sustainability of the services that these important contractors provide to the city.
Council President.
Councilwoman Miller, then Attorney Sheriff.
If I could address that to Councilwoman Piedler really quickly. Because if I remember correctly, so for one thing, this wouldn't be terminating, this would be ending. And I believe that there was a provision.
If it's not terminating, what's the difference between terminating and ending?
Terminating is, is premature. So terminating is I'm cutting it off early. Ending is the ending date. And so, but to your point, I believe that there was a, there is a provision in there that said if you wanted a new contract, you had to do it in July. That would be for a new contract. However, I don't, I can't see where, under the circumstances, the sheriff's department wouldn't be amenable to you doing a month-to-month. I'm not saying that for sure because I don't know, but I would imagine that under the circumstances, because this contract is ending, that they would be amenable until the new council comes in. In terms of Wade Trim, there is language that allows for month-to-month when this ends.
Right, that's what's language for month-to-month, which is the building services.
Yes.
We're talking with sheriff's department, we're talking about law enforcement. And where are we going to get the people from? The millions of deputies that were Pontiac police, that they want to come back, they also, they don't. Some are actually getting ready to retire. So I guess we could go to Oakland Community College and their police academy with no experience for the city of Pontiac.
I, I think, uh, Council, Councilwoman Piedler, hold on, let me kind of take this. One of the things that we have an opportunity, um, and, uh, hopefully, um, you're one of the people that are running, so you would, uh, potentially be on the new council. One of the things that we have opportunity for is the $31 million that are set aside. And one of the things that when we first negotiated the sheriff's contract, the city was in such a bad predicament that we had to prepay for services. That same contract with the 3% inflation and everything else is still in place the same way that it is. And so one of the things that I would hope that you would want to look at as a councilperson, because the council wasn't at the table when they negotiated the first contract, because we all came in under emergency management. And so I understand that we all, uh, enjoy the services that the sheriff provides. But if you look at our budget and where they went from where we started our contract to where we are now, one of the things that definitely needs to be in a new contract is what are we going to do about animal control and other things that are in the city that I know you get complaints about and other things. And so this is not to say we want to terminate any services, but as a responsible council, we need to look at all of our options. So when you guys come in in January, or whoever comes in in January, they're not tied to some of these things that were negotiated when the city of Pontiac had no say-so and what they wanted it to look like. We suffered under all of this, um, and really, the city has an operating budget of about $30 million. We need about $60 million every year. And so there's got to be some tough decisions that are going to have to be made after this $31 million is gone. And we don't want to handicap anybody based on what we negotiated when the city was on fire. So I'm just saying, don't just pick out one or two of the things and say we're going to have to go to OCC and start scaring people. The question is, and you know that the county commission has to approve all contracts anyway, but we need to start asking those questions. These deals really should have been negotiated and been presented to the council a year or so ago or more, when we asked about it during budget time. I talked about the sheriff's department, you talked about the sheriff's department. Now we're getting to the December 31st date. And instead of noting, uh, because this is what's going to happen, Councilwoman Piedler, just to be quite honest, they're going to give us something by Thanksgiving. If we don't like it, they're going to say the city services will be gone by December 31st, and you're going to come to us and say, colleagues, listen, we need to make sure our streets are safe, so we need to pass this, and now we're locked into a three-year deal with the sheriff's department that can't be renegotiated because it's already been approved by the county. And so what I'm trying to do is avoid the new council being stuck with the things that happened during emergency management. And so we can, for one good second, put personalities aside, our favorite pet projects aside, and just look at all of the contracts with the same lens, whether it be Wade Trim, whether it be the sheriff's department, whether it be, uh, Jamarko Mullins and Horton, what, regardless of what it is, to really look at it respectively and say, for some of these contracts, maybe we just want to continue them, other contracts we want to go month-to-month. But we need to have that discussion, and we need to know if that's an option. Right now, we're shutting it down before we even finding out if it's an option, and that's not responsible for the next council that's coming in. So I, I, I just want to plead with you on that. I understand you've been a big advocate from the sheriff's department since I met you, Councilwoman Piedler. And I know that if you could do anything to help, uh, make sure that our city is safe, you're going to do that.
Well, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
Obviously, you haven't been reading the notes that I do from the Public Safety Subcommittee that says that nobody is hiring, nobody is applying for fire or for, um, law enforcement. So I'm not sure why you think that it's going to be so easy. There is a leverage there, nobody is applying for these positions. And it's been on the news. I mean, we have, we have been seeing this.
Excuse me, I just want to clarify. I'm not saying that the sheriff is not providing a good service. I'm not saying that we need to switch the sheriff's department. What I'm saying is, we need to make sure that the next mayor is able to negotiate, and maybe they can get a better rate or a better program.
It has to be done this, isn't it?
Listen, listen, listen to what I'm saying.
Next year is the fire department, next year is the fire department that the chief brought to the mayor in 2018, and she still hasn't touched it.
And, and, and you're making my point, Councilwoman Piedler. That, what I'm saying to you is these contracts have been on the table for a long time.
Yeah.
And so for the council to rush and sign a three-year deal with anybody without at least having a presentation from our county commissioner and other people about what could potentially be done and have those negotiations, because the chief executive of the city has to negotiate for the city.
Have you talked to the county commissioner to see if they would go with it once a month?
Listen to what I'm saying. This is the discussion that we're having as a body. I cannot do anything independent of the seven people that sit up here. We always have to vote.
You're able to tell me that I have a problem with the dogs, and I don't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm moving, I'm going to move on.
No, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President, I have not had a chance to speak.
I mean, Councilwoman Waterman.
I'm looking at these as, as relates to these contracts and expiring, uh, expiring within the next six months. I guess I, I truly have a, a problem with now this coming to be in October, and we only have two more months. And with us being able, you have the executive office that will be negotiating, and no councilperson is sitting amongst that negotiation. So what are we going to do as a body to bring these people to table? Should we have them come in subcommittee meetings where we can sit down and talk and be able to put our, our questions forth to them and be able to negotiate what this council, what this body is looking at? Because as you just stated, they'll bring this stuff to us in November, and our hands are tied. So there needs to be, as of tomorrow, some meetings set up with, with the sheriff's department, with the fire department, to put some of the things that we would like to see placed, uh, to move forward when the new administration comes in and when this new legislative body comes in, because, Mr. President, you and I will be gone. And this is something that we have talked about till we're blue in the face of the pink that I just went over there and played with, uh, in the face. And I'm, I just have a problem now with now, we're two months out. This is October, November, December, expires December the 3rd to 1st.
I hear you, Councilwoman Waterman. Attorney Sheriff. Attorney Sheriff.
You should, uh, in the alternative, it's up to councils, whether it's the subcommittee or just have a special meeting and have these people to appear in front of councils so you guys can ask them the questions. Get them all at one time, schedule them, maybe 20 minutes, 15 minutes apart or something like that, just a suggestion.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Miller?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to address that, I think it's just only decent and the right thing to do. Uh, obviously, this administration, let's just put the elephant out there, they intend to, it wouldn't be, this is, uh, this is just a calendar business. Or you wouldn't have brought it to us at the last minute. So maybe it's too hand-tiled so we can do what they want. I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to put it on the record right now, Mr. Carrington, administration, I'm not, I'm going month-to-month with everybody because, because it's two months before our new administration coming here. These, uh, the sheriff's department, you know, for the last five, six months, I've been on them bad. It's not personal, I grew up with a lot of them, but I have a job to do. I work for my constituents, I work for them, I don't work for me. And with that being said, there's not a lot of police presidency to play in. And, Mr. President, thank you for mentioning about the animal patrol. As you well know, as of right now, I thank you, by the way, for putting money in for animal patrol, it's sitting there waiting for someone to come because this administration would never do it. It's sitting there. I, I really would want that put in with the sheriff's department, to bring somebody in here, because we need someone for the city apartment for animal patrol. I know I need it in my district. I'm tired of running from animals. And Clean Net, Wade Trim, these, it has been a problem. I go all the way back before I got in council with Wade Trim and Plant Moran about their contract. And I think it's just only decent and, and honorable thing to do. We're not saying we're going to get rid of anybody. It's month-to-month. If the new administration, whoever that come in, if they see fit, good. But I'm going to be honest right now, the sheriff's department contract is, it's just grown outrageous. It's one-third of our budget. The citizens need to look at it, it's, 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 it's crazy. And, and I, and I, you know, I'll be the first one to say, you know, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name with the drone back there, I'm sorry, but we need drones all over the city with the crime going on, we can't get people to respond as fast enough. So if you're paying for a service as a citizen, you want to see to say, you know, I can advocate and say, hey, they're wonderful. But I'm going to be honest with you, colleagues, um, Mayor Piedler, I don't see them like they were when they first came here. I actually could turn every corner they were there, I don't see that. So I don't think that, uh, no one is going to get rid of. So, I don't think that, no one is going to get rid of anybody, but we want our bangs for our buck. And I think that should be done with the next administration to let them do what they need to do, because that would be wrong for us to pinpoint them, fix it for the next four years for that new council, whether I be there or not. Whether I be there or not, it doesn't matter. We are, we work for the citizens of Pontiac, and these contracts, in many ways, God is good, especially to them on here, because I've been trying to get them, I mean, for the city of Pontiac, they haven't had been held accountable for years. Anybody coming to council meeting knows this. And so, I'm not going to vote on anything less than month-to-month for everyone that's left. I wish it was some more that was left, but unfortunately, it went through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair?
Pro Tem Carter and then Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to mention, because we've been asking for forensic audit for a long time, and I'm going to say again publicly, I know we got double books, we got triple books. Mr. Jose, you spoke about the GERS. That has not been cleared up. That twelve million dollars for that police and fire pension hasn't been cleared up. We know already that we can't use any Biden money or CARES Act or COVID money, but I had a problem doing the budget, trying to figure out, Mr. President, whether or not we use some COVID money to go ahead and pension or moving the money around, because those documents were not brought forth to this council with any type of clarity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I am not going to allow...
Yeah, and if I could, let me just, a couple of things, I do want to state, I'm assuming when you say double books and triple books, you're implying or trying to explicitly state that we're, like, we're running some type of illegal operation where we're keeping off the book.
I don't know who's running it, it just...
Well, you made, you made the accusation, and as I've had to do before, there are people who come to City Hall every day and work and don't play politics. These people have jobs and should not be made subject to these types of allegations. I'm here every meeting, I don't have a problem with you making erroneous statements against me, but when you start making these types of allegations, you're slandering the name of people who are not involved in this type of foolishness, and we really should be, we really should be better than that. I don't know, I don't know if you were meant to literally or figuratively, but I just think, just given the atmosphere, given where we are, we should be careful with our language.
I would love to see even the GERS numbers being corrected, because we shouldn't have to have these discussions.
I'm not, I'm not even sure what you're talking about.
He doesn't know what he's talking about when it comes to GERS. I'm sitting here, Mr. President, I'm getting offended.
And I don't, I don't have a problem explaining to you.
Excuse me, excuse me, Councilwoman Waterman, has the floor.
I got you here, Mr. Carrington.
Okay, appreciate that.
Mr. Pro Tem?
Yes?
You don't understand what's going on with the pension fund I have sitting there. You have a trustee that's sitting out here, Billy Swayzer. There has been nothing underhanded that's being dealt with that pension fund. So, please, if you don't know what's going on with there, please, don't throw out that miscommunication, because you are off bases. You are totally off bases when you talk about the pension. And that's all I'm going to say. And I'm trying not to get, trying not to get upset or belligerent out here, but you are off bases when you talk about the pension. So, leave that alone. If you want to talk about anything else, go right ahead.
Be free to talk about it. Thank you, Mr. Carrington. The documentation for the lawsuit against the, for the police and fire pension, if that has been clarified, I would just like to see a copy of it. Thank you.
Council President?
Okay, Attorney Sharp?
Just to address something that Councilwoman Miller said, my suggestion about looking at these contracts, some of them, you don't know whether or not it is an option, whether you can go month-to-month. So, I'm saying if there is, if it is an option, you may want to exercise it. That's why I think this council should, in fact, have these conversations and discussions with the other parties, so you can see what is an option and what's not an option, whether some of these can go month-to-month or some of them cannot. Wade Trim, for sure, there's language in the contract that states that. Whether police and the Waterford Regional, that's another, that's something completely different. I'm not even sure whether you have the option, but you all need to explore the possibilities. Thank you.
I think, Attorney Sharp, I think you're right on base. I think we need to schedule a special meeting to deal with these expiring contracts, to have them present in front of the council, and I believe we can do that our next study session. If we can start that early at five o'clock, to give us time to do that, let me look and see the date. Today is the nineteenth. Okay, so that would be November of the second, oh, that's election day. So, we're meeting, we're meeting at noon on Thursday, which is even better. So, let's schedule it for that special Thursday after election at noon, because a lot of these contracts are with people that will be working during that time. So, I think that would be good, because that meeting is already scheduled at noon to put that on the agenda, so we can have all expiring contracts together and find out what can be done with the month-to-month and what is not, so we can ask some pertinent questions with that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes.
You had recognized me before, I just don't want you to forget that I was...
Yeah, go ahead. Hold on, first we need to deal with this action, and then we can, I'll recognize you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Chair?
No, no, I was saying, I just want to make that meeting that we're having at noon on the special, just about expiring contracts and nothing else, because we should have dispatched everything that's on this agenda. Will be to deal with, explicitly with expiring contracts.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, so, so I'm going to recognize, Councilwoman Peetla, go ahead.
My question to you is, you're saying you want to discuss with the other parties? Are you asking for the other parties to be here during the study session?
Yes.
Then you would have to contact the sheriff and the under sheriff, because they are the ones that handle the contracts.
Duly noted. Okay, I need a motion to suspend the rules?
No.
Support? Okay, I take the move from Miller, the support from Taylor Burks. Roll call?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Peetla?
Yes.
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 You realize also that we have to invite Mr. Wall from Waterford Township, because this is a two-community contract?
All the, all the parties, yes, thank you. Duly noted.
Well, Wall is not, he's the township supervisor, and he may not be available.
Well, so...
Thank you.
The invitation will be sent.
Okay, all right. So, now we need a motion to actually vote on making the twelve noon Tuesday meeting, Thursday, November fourth meeting, expiring contracts only. Is there a move?
Some are.
Is there support? All right. I'll take the move from Peetla, the support. Taylor Burke?
Yes.
Yep, okay, any city council discussion on that? CNN, roll call?
Miller?
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, this, I wanted to speak to the issue of expiring contracts, which is an administration function by the charter, and we will do our job as an administration, as we always have, as we have for the last eight years, in making sure that we dealt with contracts as is required by the charter. I would also like to just say to you, council, we're open to any council input at any time. We always open that door of communication, you have only to use it, if you have ideas or thoughts to go into the negotiations. But certainly, we wouldn't want to bring any kind of rankish discussion like what we witnessed here into any negotiation room that is orderly and decency. So, we will continue to go about our job with the people that are here. And also, I would like to speak to the fact, and Mr. Carrington, you spoke very eloquently to the fact that under known circumstances, would we tolerate or accept as proper behavior for anyone to accuse, to defame any of the people who worked with my administration that I'm very proud of, and to cast those accusations and those well-known slurs on their reputation is abominable, and I will speak to that. And I hope that you have enough, the rest of the council people who heard that, have enough decency to be ashamed that one of your own would use such slanderous and terrible accusations. And I do thank you, Mr. Carrington, for speaking to that, and I do apologize to everyone of my administration here who has worked diligently, who are reputable, who come and do a good job, because they know that my intention is to serve the citizens of Pontiac well.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask that that same courtesy be shown to the city council, and so that you would treat us with dignity and respect. I honor every one of the city employees. It is a sad state of affairs that we have management in the city that has not allowed a forensic audit to clear up any allegations in the city, which is a duly noted responsibility of the city council, which has been circumvented by the city attorney who represents the administration for the city. And so, what I want to be clear on is this, on paper, our city looks great. I don't know if there's... Listen, hold on, excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Looks great in the bank.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. So, we can move on to the next thing. The bottom line is this, the forensic audit needed to happen, it hasn't happened, and whoever gets in next, please do a forensic audit. We're going to move on.
Mr. Chair, you are lying, and I can't, I can't go ahead. The forensic audit was not done because your consultant did not sign the contract, did not sign the contract. That's why it did not happen.
We're moving on to the next item.
I know you want to move ahead, but I have to tell the truth. That is a lie you continue to tell. It does not become true the more times you say it. Maybe out of order, but you're out of order and playing that lie over and over again. The people of Pontiac will not be deluded into that lie.
You're, you're, you're out of order continuously. And so, this was the ranker that the mayor was just talking about less than five minutes ago, when we're negotiating contracts. And as you can see clearly, she's the one that's out of order right now. So, I just want that to be duly noted, but this dovetails in the item number five, which is a status update on the employee hazardous pay payments. Why have they not been paid, Madam Mayor?
Well, I just, I, by my, I just wanted to give Councilwoman an update. We have followed the meeting, we have, you know, my department has began processing these payments, we have reviewed all the applicable rules in terms of tax treatment and so forth. Right now, and Madam Mayor may speak to this more in depth, we are, we do have an all-staff meeting, all-employee staff meeting on the twenty-ninth, I'm sorry, let me just double-check, the twenty-ninth, Friday, October twenty-ninth, and we are planning to make the payments available to employees at that meeting.
Why so long?
Councilwoman Waterman?
We came here September, it came before this body before, and when... No, because you might see my expression. When it came before this body, and we saw the names and saw how disparaging the count was, the top was getting, and the ones who was doing the major work weren't getting any money. So, we decided to take this to our finance subcommittee, and the finance subcommittee, we sat down and we decided that everyone would get paid the same amount of monies. And, and we did a budget amendment, so these people can get these funds. And now, you want to sit here, now, if it's anything else that the administration and them want to get moved for, it's done like that. But we're trying to take care of the people who they say that they like and they care about and respect and da, 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 da. You won't give them their money, and they have to wait a whole month to get this money? That makes absolutely no sense, absolutely no sense. That should have been taken care of the week after we get, they get paid, when do I get paid? Every two Thursdays or something? It should have been taken care of. This makes absolutely no sense that these people don't have their money. No sense.
Yep, Councilwoman Miller, then Councilwoman Peetla.
Waterman, I know. It's sad. You know, I'm a believer. Talk is cheap. Action is what, that's why I don't talk much, I just do. Mr. Carrington, you know what, you know, you are, you know, you are a man of stature, you work for the city, and your actions have to go with what you say every day, okay? We did ask you to get that money from Jennifer. What would hold them up? The mayor just spoke, she said, we got plenty money in the bank. She just said it. These are the people that you just spoke about, said you wouldn't be offended by colleagues standing, I'm not going to say one way or the other, whether he's out of place or not there for you two, but if you love me, you could tell me you love me all day, but if you don't do anything for me, you don't mean nothing to me. That's cheap. So, now, we're hearing that these people haven't received their money. I just assumed they had it, you know, because you stated the last time you were there, it was about two weeks, and they would have their money. So, this is what makes people suspicious because of the things you do. It's not what you say, it's what you're doing. These people are hurting. Truth be told, they should have got money last year. Last year. Now, these are people coming in with a pandemic. I'm going to be honest with you, that and me, I would have quit. A pandemic. I commend them, that's why I think they deserve this. Actually, I think they deserve more, because some of these people may have died from being in here. You know, we never know, we don't know, we don't give a council what, this is absolutely, this is what I'm talking about, this is what government is. Government is for protecting and taking care of the people. To come up there every week and say what you're going to do, and you don't perform means absolutely nothing to me. These people are hurting in City Hall, they need their money, Mr. Carrington. And you really need to explain why they can't get their money. And the mayor just said, the money's there. She said it, came out of mouth. The money's there in the bank. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Peetla?
I know you're here to represent, I know you're here to represent the mayor, and I know that you have to operate on the mayor's standards, so let me address this question to the mayor. I'm looking, Madam Mayor, there are four people that have not received their raise, their three percent raise that we approved in the budget in July, and nobody has received a retro to it. So, when is that going to happen? This is what, October?
Ms. Councilwoman Peetla, some of these Biden HR matters, which should not be discussed in open session.
Oh, check this out, guys, it's money.
So, let me just say that, let me say that to you to answer that question.
We got money in the bank, but she's saying that she's not going to give these hard-working people.
I didn't say that. I just said that some things, some of the things you question asked, only due to personnel matters, which need to be discussed in the proper circumstances.
We're talking about the ARD money, so why can't we talk about this?
Yes.
You haven't paid these people, we approved the budget in July, and we gave them a three percent raise.
Yes.
There are four people that work hard, and they have not got their raise. You and I discussed this before a couple of months ago.
I cannot discuss personnel matters in open session, Councilwoman Peetla.
They haven't gotten the three percent raise, and they haven't gotten any...
So...
What?
Mr. President?
So, hold on, hold on, hold on, one, one, hold on, excuse me. I think that what we should do as a body, because we only speak by ordinance and resolution, is to have the clerk take out a piece of paper.
Again?
First, yeah, first, we need to suspend the rules, so I'm asking for a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll move to suspend the rules, I don't know what for it, but I'm moving.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Roll call? Okay. It's been moved and supported. Roll call.
Yes.
Taylor Burke.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, city attorney, uh, I would ask for your clarification on how this should be worded. Uh, but uh all employee uh hazard pay payments should be released immediately. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just ask you one, one point of clarification, and that would be for the city attorney? So what I, what I was hearing is that if, if this was going to be given at the all-staff meeting, that means a paper check and not a deposit, which is customary in terms of how we receive our compensation?
I wouldn't defer to Mr. Carrington on that.
That's why I'm asking.
Not that. Sorry, uh, counselor, can you restate your question comment?
What I heard you say is that at the all-staff meeting, this is when this was gonna occur. That's what I heard.
Yes.
So if that's going to happen, that means that they, it would be in hand. Is that correct?
Um. Yeah, well, we hadn't worked through the mechanics, but.
Okay, so just to clarify, so I hear you. So just to clarify, uh, Mr. President, if the reason for that is just for your resolution, if it can indicate how we are customarily paid as opposed to possibly some kind of alternative payment?
So Attorney Sharp.
Yeah.
It's been a long night. Uh, I'm waiting on my Lakers game at ten o'clock. So if you could just give me the language and then we can vote on it so it can be correct.
You have to indicate what it is you're trying to say first.
No, we want it to be the customary payment. So if they get direct deposit, they need to get a direct deposit before. And when is the staff meeting, Mr. Carrington?
Uh, on the.
Okay, so we need, uh, so, um, city attorney, um, I, I will lean to you, but I want a resolution that says that all staff who are to receive hazard pay could have a direct deposit uh on or before the twenty-ninth of October. But I'm. Once you, once you switch it, then we'll be dealing with.
We, we keep it in our old books, uh, how we normally do it.
You said what?
What about the three percent and the retro?
What, 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 what I'm, what I'm saying to you is we need to deal with that on a separate resolution because we just don't know who, who, who is. We don't know if, you, you're saying it's for, it might be order four. We don't, we don't know.
Well, I've got the name for it.
No, that's what I'm saying. We, we don't know, Councilwoman Peedla. And so I don't wanna, yeah, I don't know who.
I guess there needs to be clarification in terms of what you're saying because the city attorney is saying you, you're, you're basically leaving it to the twenty-ninth. So if you're trying to.
We need to just say effective immediately, and then that's what we need to say. So we need to say direct deposit, excuse me, I told you it's late.
Customarily, however.
As they, as they customarily get paid effective immediately.
Darren, can you speak into the mic because you're not hearing it on the TV? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know that counsel can take that administrative function.
What, what, what I, what, listen, what I.
I'm doing my best to try to follow along. I'm sorry.
I, I understand what you, I understand what you're saying, and maybe they can uh veto this or whatever. But this needs to go down in the annals of Pontiac history that these people have not gotten their due money. And the interesting part about this particular initiative, this was an initiative that was brought to us by administration.
Yes.
And so the fact that this has been delayed and held back blows my mind. So what I'm saying to you is the mayor has the right to veto and override and do whatever she's gonna do. But I think as a body, because we only speak by ordinance and resolution, the sentiments of this council need to be made to everybody who's been working hard for the city and deserves this hazard pay money. Now, if they choose not to do it, then we'll be talking about this on the next Tuesday, Thursday, or whatever the day is, uh, Mr. Attorney. But I think that we need to be able to send a message as a council. That we thought that immediately after we knew that the money was there out of the general fund, these people were gonna get paid. If the administration decides they don't want to do it or whatever, it needs to be clear that the council didn't do this. As many times we've had city newsletters saying what the council has not allowed the administration to do. This is one instance in which we have worked together as a body, and these people still haven't got paid. So I'm asking that the resolutions say that they get paid, and what's that date, Mr. Uh, uh, clerk?
Well, we get paid Thursday.
So on or before the twenty-first?
Thursday.
Yep, which is Thursday.
Your Honor, uh, Council President.
Yes.
I, I don't know that I can craft a resolution that's not, may not be enforceable. This is something, is it okay, can we uh talk, can we put this on the agenda for next week?
That should be.
I mean.
Go, go ahead, Madam, uh, Mr. Clerk.
The charter is very clear. It says in the charter that the city council controls payroll. It says that the city council controls payroll. Pull it up online. It's in the charter.
Right.
So, the council's petition for resolution, so.
Okay, can you read the language so we can vote on it, Mr. Burke?
But I thought the checks were ready to go anyway.
Are the checks ready to go, Mr. Carrington?
That's what Mr. Carrington just said. The checks were ready to go.
No, he said, he said there's gonna be a meeting on the twenty-ninth if they can do it. Uh, so my, my thing is do the resolution on or before. This, this makes absolutely no sense that we did this on the twenty-eighth and these people are waiting for their money. Now, whatever they're gonna do after that, this council has done, done its judiciary responsibility to the employees that everybody claims they care so much about giving them their money. And in that regard, also with the budget, we did across the board three percent raise. It did not include having an evaluation. Everybody was supposed to get a three percent raise. So I don't understand how this can be an HR problem. Give these people their money. They work every day. Some of them work in overtime and around time, and you don't want to give them their money. That's just un-unconscionable to me. So if that needs to be put in there too, put that in there too, that them people that we said get a three percent over the board because the administration wanted to give them seven percent. I once said, no, that's too much money, and we gave everybody a three percent. And you still have people in here waiting to get their money. Unbelievable.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Colleen Waterman, you know, you just gotta call, spade, spade. What it, what it look like is like politics. You know, Mr. Carrington, you spoke that way. I'm sorry, I keep going back to the charter. But this is a little like politics one-on-one, political science. Well, I mean, really, because some of these people, kind of get small. They, is, are they being uh hurt because they don't follow the policies, something because there seems to be some problem with some of these people that's missing money? That's politics, putting employees in politics, and that's so, so wrong.
Mr. Chair.
Why do some get it and the other did not?
Okay, can you read the resolution, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Uh, no, no, I'm waiting on the clerk.
Okay.
Madam Mayor. Turn up your mic because we can't hear you. Here, you can have my mic.
So what I have is the all hazard pay should be issued, issued by direct deposit or check by October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one to all qualifying employees. In that, in that resolution, it was an attachment, which was a part of the, the minutes, which actually stated everybody's position in the amount that they were supposed to inevitably get.
So you would want to say pursuant to the resolution passed by council on September twenty-eighth, uh, which includes uh, an attached list of employees um that are to receive the hazard pay or something to that extent. Because you need to make reference to the resolution that they passed. We're beyond that. It was September.
Mr. Chair.
Clarification from Attorney Sharp in terms of the effective date of any particular resolution. I don't think it becomes effective until it goes through the, the potential veto process. I'm not, I don't have the charter with me. That's why I was asking for a clarification from Attorney Sharp.
True, because you can still have the effective date, but whether or not it gets vetoed is subject to whether or not it gets vetoed. But hypothetically, if something doesn't get vetoed, it can be effective immediately. Do you understand what I'm saying? That's up to the mayor whether or not she vetoes something. You can still put in effective date.
So we, we got a, do we get a move and support? No, we know we need a move and support.
Mr. Chair, I can clarify some things if I can ask, if I ask to be recognized.
Okay, so we said, all hazard pay should be issued by direct deposit or check to um on or before October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one to all qualifying employees pursuant to the resolution adopted by the council on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, which included um an attached. Right, I got off. Which included um an attach, man, because that September twenty-eighth resolution had an attachment. And I guess you can add in reference to section three point one-two-zero of the city charter, which states that the control of the city payroll um is under council's control. No compensation salary should be paid to any appointees, members of boards of commissions or employees of the city except as approved by the city council.
Yep, that's true.
Uh, I mean, you gotta wonder when you, when you appoint the uh person.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question, and this is for the GERS board. Maybe they can help me. Billy, you're here, Patrice. Um, I'm getting a question wanting to know why the city is not paying as one of our sergeants, Michael Paramore and Thomas Markendale af-after Judge Fox from Waterford, because they had to go to Waterford, gave a judgment to the city attorney saying to pay them. Everybody was paid before them.
Uh, Councilwoman, that is on our agenda. When we get to that, we'll deal with that. That is a totally separate item.
Yes, it is a separate thing. It is a separate thing. You're right. I'm just asking.
Okay, well, when we get to, to number twenty, we'll deal with that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, um, all right. Any other discussion on this agenda item? Okay, roll call.
Shremsky. Taylor Burks.
Yeah.
Waterman. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller. Peedla.
Yes.
Seven yeses, no nays.
Okay, uh, item passes, uh, which brings us to item, uh, since, uh, I'm gonna ask um to suspend the rules and go straight up to item number twenty.
Thank you.
Is there a move and support?
Support.
Okay, all right. Uh, who's presenting item number twenty?
Uh, number twenty, so you're going all the way up to the budget amendment for the uh allocation from the general fund uh for the uh published notice of the budget amendment. Uh, is that the one you're skipping over the others to?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Um, um, while Mr. Bosnick is coming to the microphone for this one. Well, he's coming to the microphone. I will say that the uh matter of paid by central workers was brought, brought to the council by the administration. The employees will get their money October twenty-ninth. Uh, we will give them, make sure they get that. And this has been very well received by all the staff who are getting the money.
Meeting adjourned.
There, thank you.
Oh, wow. Madam Mayor, I hope you're happy as hell. No, because these guys are one, you know, we're the Pontiacs. These are all former deputies. They're all former.